So at this point, it's seven o'clock. So we're going to call this meeting to order of the Leominster School Committee on Monday, May 3rd. If everyone can please rise to say the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And thank you, Dean, for providing us the flag. Appreciate that. I just want to alert people, if anybody is planning on recording this, they need to announce themselves at this time. As always, this is being recorded for the Leominster Access TV. I'm going to read our school committee statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster. Having read that, we're going to open up the public forum. At this time, we have one person who has signed up ahead of time, so I will call her first. But after that, if anybody wishes to speak, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record. At this time, Nikki Turpin, if you would like to come forward. Nikki, if you're out there, you signed up to speak. If you could unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. So I don't know whether she's here, but she has not come forward, so we'll open it up to anybody else that wishes to address the committee. If anybody would like to address the committee, please unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record, please. For a second time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please unmute yourself. And one final and last time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please do so at this time. Okay, having no one come forward, we're going to close that portion of our meeting. If we can move on to communications superintendent.
There are no communications this evening.
Okay, then we'll move right into the superintendent's report.
Great, thank you very much. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I don't think it could come at a better time. Our buildings are all open, K to 12, five days a week. We started last Wednesday, ahead of the state, with our high school. So if you see a teacher, want to send a message to a teacher, just thank you is all we need for such a tumultuous year. I think they deserve it, and so any way we can celebrate our teachers, that's what we need to do. So I want to send a heartfelt out there to all of them and say, you did it, we're doing it, and we're going to finish this on the plus side. So great job to all of our staff, and please keep it up. We also have started our new spring sports. For parents who would like to participate, watch their children, we will keep contacting for the sports, how many family members can be there or friends. If you have any questions, please contact your child's coach and/or Dave Pelosi, the athletic director. This information changes almost daily for us. It's getting better and better with outdoor without masks. So as many participants as we can to see their children engage would be better than ever. So if you have any questions, don't hesitate to reach out to us. And speaking about communication, the next few weeks, I can't stress enough how important it is for you to listen to your building principals if they call or they email. My emails, if you feel like you want to delete them because it's just too much, that's fine, but please listen to your building administrators. We're starting, the month of May is MCAS month, and so I don't want anybody to worry about it. It's happening. It will be for grades three through eight. It's a very quick process. We are going to go through this, and we are assessing as often as we can. Each school, each grade level, has a different schedule, so parents need to be aware that these things are happening. We also do not have school on May 12th. That's a professional development day for teachers. So next Wednesday, May 12th, there is no school. It's a professional development day. Also, the most important piece, summer opportunities are beginning to be posted. Creative Choices has reached out to families. Special Education has reached out to families. Today, we posted for CTI their opportunities, and by next Monday, we not only have academic summer programming, we have enrichment programming. So look for those postings. I've asked each and every principal to push that out and filter it through their families. Even if I'm doing it, sometimes it feels like overkill. We just want to make sure that everyone gets the information. We are having programming, all grade levels, for everyone. There's something out there to keep the kids of Leominster busy this summer. We're also talking to the rec department. Whatever we need, we want to make sure that everybody is engaged. So if you have any questions, first, contact your school, and if you haven't received that information, then contact us downtown. We just want to make sure it's all out there. Biggest piece, graduation. We are prepping. We are in full throttle for June 5th at Doyle Field, right, Dr. Dobzinski? We're very excited about this. I hesitate to say the words. I know, there is a rain date, but we said, if it's not a monsoon, we're going forward. But the rain date would be June 6th. Our seniors deserve this. It will happen. It's happening on time at 10:00 down at Doyle Field. Families are being addressed now. You will start seeing those letters, the callouts. The high school sent out a list. There are soon senior events happening currently, so please just keep it on your radar, and anything that you want to participate in, please do. And for many of our families, after whatever this year was, right, the last day of school is June 16th. So we have six and a half weeks, and we are working so hard. It's really been pleasurable having all of our students in. Every day, there are more and more children coming into school, asking to be in person. We're about 70/30, 70 in person, 30% remote, but it's changing day to day, and we're going to be looking at that remote piece, because right now, it is not an option for next year, but we're looking at that, and we're researching with the Department of Education around that. But more and more families are coming in. Please come in. Please be a part of our summer. Please be a part of anything that we or the city has to offer. It's only in the best interest of all the children of Leominster. So we're excited. Today had great energy, and it felt very, I will never use the word "normal" again, felt very typical. Okay, so we're back. So a lot to be celebrated. Again, if you see a teacher in your pathway, just give them a thank you. That's all they're looking for, just a thank you. Thank you.
Paula, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
So will we still have the awards banquet? Will you still have that? Do you still have the prom, those kinds of things?
Well, so...
Not sure on the prom.
Not sure on the prom, but the awards, we always, we do it virtually, and we handle that piece, but the prom, no. They had a senior sunrise meeting last week. They all got up at 3:30 and four went up to Sholins, and all gathered, as much as we can do outside, so there's many celebrations. You received a list today of what's happening for our seniors. We've got some unique ideas around that, so anything that people can attend, please do.
Thank you.
You're muted, Eileen. Sorry.
Yep, of course. Are the events publicized on the website for those people that are interested in, you know, particularly the senior families?
Dr. Dobzinski?
Yeah, we're uploading that. It just went out this afternoon, too. We mailed it to everybody, all the senior parents, so they should be getting copies, but we will also put it on the website.
Perfect, thank you. All right, so thank you very much, and of course, a shout out to all the teachers who have done an amazing job despite quite a bit of adversity and challenges. We appreciate everyone's hard work and commitment to the students of Leominster. Thank you.
Eileen, can I just, before we get too far, we're doing a family and student vaccination on May 11th, and I just, before we lose parents who might not catch us at the very end, I think it's important. It's from noon to 6:00, and we've been talking to the superintendent and the principal about it. So it's May 11th, from 12 to 6:00, and well, if it ends up being, you know, if we get a good reception, we can do additional dates, but this is for students and their families, ages 16 to...
Perfect. I was gonna say, how do they sign up for it, and where will it be held?
It will be held through the high school. You can sign up through the high school. And the vaccine is Pfizer. We'll have 400, but if we need, but we can get additional if we need them, but for now, we'll start off with 400. We don't know how many people have already been vaccinated in terms of parents and family, but they have to be at least 16 years old.
Great, thank you. That's a wonderful opportunity for folks, and hopefully, people will take advantage of it. Melissa, did you have an additional question? No, thank you, I asked it. All right, awesome. All right, now we're going to go into presentations, which really is all about budget.
Great, thank you. So tonight, we're going to wait for Mel to pull up the presentation, but tonight, instead of working with just the finance subcommittee, we are bringing the presentation forward to the whole committee. We're looking for some feedback. Any suggestions you have? I feel really solid about what Mel has shared and what she's done for work. We'll be kind with Mel. I mean, this is her anthem right now, and remember, she's a numbers girl. She loves her numbers, and we're going to support her through numbers, and then we'll figure it out from there. So if Mel, if you could start sharing the screen.
And superintendent, I just want to interject before Mel starts, as the, all the principals are in attendance, if people have any questions regarding their building.
Yep, I will get right to that. Yep, exactly.
Just to let everyone know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Melanie. So before we start anything, I do want to thank the teams, and this to take teams of people who've worked through this process under really complicated circumstances. In attendance tonight is my cabinet, each school principal, along with the finance subcommittee. They're here to answer any and all questions or comments or concerns that you may have, and we've worked through this process, so nothing is off the table. This process began in early January. This work is intensive, and at times can be exhaustive. The first main piece of the yearly puzzle is our projected enrollment. Although we're down by 187 students, teams have planned with a typical and/or historical participation count. Principals worked with their staff and each department to review, to research, and to analyze any and all data pertinent to supporting the students of Leominster. Principals submitted building staff and expense requests, and then individual and group meetings began. As decisions were being made, multiple meetings with my directors, such as Special Education and ELL, reviewed student projections to ensure that all tiered supports were in place. These departments were also afforded an additional feedback from their parent advisories, the CPAC and LPAC. The curriculum and technology team reviewed all their current product lists, needs, and wants, and not knowing what FY22 may bring, we were charged with creating a fiscally responsible response in which to address the district's needs and growths. This is my favorite slide. So as you can see, on the left, we always plan for a smooth, continuous school year, which reaches a pinnacle after 180 days of grade instruction, right? Although our year truly looked like the image on the right, we recognized that our endpoint was still on the positive. Our mission of every child, every classroom, every day, that never changed, just how we got there. We look forward to a new year, a new start with some fresh energy. As you can see in the image on the left, all three children have the same goal, right? They just want to watch a game. They're just children. Should be easy, right? Not so much. There's always challenges to overcome. The second image, it represents a process of trying to provide for each child, but it's only temporary. Conditions can change at a moment's notice. The last image takes into consideration what any child truly needs, what is fair, what is equitable to be able to participate in the experience. Why have any barrier, or in this image, a fence at all? This is the goal of the FY22 budget. As we prepare for a typical all-in-school year, we've brought a budget that focuses on the recovery and acceleration for each and every child in Leominster. Budget manager Melanie Michaels has built a strong foundation in which to bounce Leominster Public Schools forward. I would ask that you allow her to complete her presentation as she explicitly defines our financial forecast. Your feedback and support of moving this budget forward towards a hearing is most needed, and at this point, I'd like to introduce Melanie Michaels.
Good evening. Thank you, Paula. Chapter 70 is the state aid distributed to schools throughout Massachusetts. Most of us know the foundation budget portion, and that it's driven by student enrollment. The other part of the Chapter 70 foundation formula, not as familiar, is the local contribution. This portion is the amount each district has the ability to pay towards Chapter 70 aid, and is driven by the city's property values and resident income. As I mentioned in the last slide, Chapter 70 is impacted heavily on student enrollment. A dip in enrollment from one year to the next can have a big impact. The formula is based on school district enrollment as of October 1st of the prior year. In October 2020, due to the pandemic, Massachusetts Public Schools lost 37,000 students. For the Leominster Public Schools, enrollment was down 187 students. Based on the combination of those students, that equates to a $1.2 million loss of Chapter 70 funding. You'll notice on this slide, the Chapter 70 aid from fiscal '21 to fiscal '22 increased by only $373,982, less than 1%. While the city's required contribution went up by 1.12 million, or 3.65%, in total, for fiscal '22, the increase in net school spending was 1.5 million, or 1.88%. This is not the final budget number. The House and the Senate release and debate their own versions of the budget before negotiating a single version that will, with any luck, be signed by the start of the fiscal '22 school For this presentation, we're going to break down the fiscal '22 budget request as pieces of what I'm calling our pie. There are five pieces of pie that we'll review separately. I have color-coordinated them to make it easier to follow. Each year, we begin the budget process by determining the district's fixed costs. There are expenses that must be paid. For fiscal '22, the Leominster Public Schools budget has 92% dedicated to fixed costs. Let's start with the biggest piece of pie, wages and salaries. For fiscal '22, wages and salaries make up 62% of the school's budget. From year to year, the budget for salaries increases by contractual increases, such as cost of living, step increases, and lane changes. For fiscal '21, you can see, we had requested 839.7 FTEs, or full-time equivalent employees. Currently, today, we have 760 FTEs, not 839. For fiscal '22, the district is requesting 46 positions to bring the total FTEs to 805.9. The 805.9 includes all current positions, currently posted positions, and positions that will need to be filled in fiscal '22. The district is already seeing the return of many of the 187 students that were not counted on April, excuse me, on October 1st, 2020. This request is based on a full-in model, projected enrollment, and class size. Benefits and fixed charges make up 18% of the budget. The numbers you see here include benefits such as health insurance, dental insurance, and life insurance for not only active but retired employees and potentially their beneficiaries. You can see historically, we have had a 9% to 10% increase. Fiscal '21 was not your normal year. We are projected to have a savings of 3.4%. In order to project for fiscal '22, we used our current enrollment or current staff for benefits and estimated an additional amount for those 46 positions to be filled in fiscal '22. The total projected percent of 12.3% is misleading, because it is compared to fiscal '21. If we take fiscal '21 savings into consideration, we net to our historic 9% increase. Special education tuitions have always been a tough projection for the budget. The costs can fluctuate greatly from year to year, depending upon the individual student service needs. From one year to the next, it's challenging to project how many students may need to be sent out of district, or how many may move into district. For fiscal '22, we are projecting that special education tuitions will be 7% of our budget or our pie. As you can see, historically, there is no trend in the increase or decrease of tuitions like we saw with benefits. In the past, we have relied on the funds we receive from Circuit Breaker to help offset tuition expenses. For fiscal '21, we were able to absorb the tuition expenses in the general fund. As per the Massachusetts General Law, 603 Under School Finance, we are allowed to carry forward 2.1 million of Circuit Breaker, which was considered for the fiscal '22 budget. You can see, we only included $6,824,61 for our requested budget for fiscal '22. Indirect charges are the expenses that are incurred by the city for the benefit of the schools. This includes costs such as administration, retirement expense, DPW services, school resource officers, and state assessments for school choice, sending tuitions, and charter schools. Historically, these charges have been about $6.2 million. What's left to our pie, 8%, this little sliver of pie right here, that equates to $6,435,270. The last piece of the pie is made up of all the other expenses that are not necessarily fixed. Some of them are necessary and still need to be paid, but are not directly used in the classroom. I call these intangible expenses, and the other expenses are directly used in the classroom by students. We call them tangible expenses. To most people, 6.4 million sounds like a lot of money, so let's break it down. Let's start with the intangible expenses. We still consider these expenses to be somewhat fixed, because as I said, they are expenses that need to be paid. Things such as repair and maintenance for 11 buildings and equipment, heating and utilities for those same 11 buildings. It includes custodial supplies, lease of equipment such as copiers, school security, legal services, and so on. These intangible expenses have historically cost between $3.9 and $4.3 million. That 8% right here, intangibles equal 67% of that 8%. The last 33% of the 8% piece of pie are the tangible expenses, those that are directly impacting the students in the classroom. Things such as textbooks, curriculum, instructional services, hardware, and software, as well as psychological services, and medical and therapeutic services, and your general classroom supplies. These expenses have historically been between $1.5 and $2 million. Here, we see a comparison from the fiscal '21 requested budget for expenses and fiscal '22 budget request, which we've gone over, it's just not including indirect costs. Overall, the fiscal '22 budget request is 2.4% more than the fiscal '21 budget request, The Leominster Public Schools is requesting $52,247,54 in wages and salaries, $27,672,43 in expenses, $4.1 million in indirets, for a total fiscal '22 budget request of $84,012,797. The fiscal '22 budget will be supplemented by other resources that are available. We have one-time federal funding provided to the school district that will be available for the next three years to address the impact the pandemic has had. We have revolving accounts that support specific programs and services, and of course, We're happy to hear any and all feedback and suggestions that will assist us in bringing the budget request to the city council. Thank you for your time.
Melanie, thank you so much. At this time, Melanie, that was phenomenal. I think that was great for everyone to hear the work that you've done, the historical background that you've built. It's very much appreciated. This evening, we have our cabinet, our principals, we have our head of maintenance, everyone is on board, so if there are questions for any one of us, I would ask that you just direct them through me, so I know who appropriately to send the question towards, but thank you, Melanie.
And I'm going to call every person, you know, individually, so we make sure everyone has a chance. Thank you, Melanie. Ron, do you want to go first, please? You have to unmute.
Mel, can you take the program down?
Sure.
Thank you.
No, I, she was all-encompassing with her material. I don't have any questions. It's just the small things, but that'll, we have to see how it plays out. I'm very happy with her presentation.
All right, thank you, Ron. Melissa?
Hi, so I just have some more specific questions. I think about how different pockets were estimated. One of them was the insurance cost, knowing how much that's increased. Um, the, the average estimated increase, was that an assumption based on what new employees have been using, or was that if all of the new hires take insurance through the city?
Okay. Yeah, so we took, um, we have an average that we use, um, because you don't know, you don't know if families are going to come in and take the family plan, or if you're going to have a single plan. So we do use an average, um, based on that.
And then in the very large binder, there was a breakdown of, um, the different schools and their needs and requests for renovations. Um, I was just wondering what that process looked like. Um, I don't know, I wondered if it was based on enrollment at the different schools or what the needs were. I know some schools have gotten a lot of, um, updates. Some maybe need some more, so I was just kind of looking at what that process looked like.
Melanie, would you like Butch to answer that?
I would love that.
Okay, Butch. Butch has been phenomenal for our district this year, probably the busiest man in town. So Butch, if you're, I'm not sure where you're sitting this evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Butch.
That's great, can you repeat the question now?
Go ahead, Mel. Melissa or Mel, so?
No, Melissa.
So that's it, so I was looking at the, um, the requests for repairs or renovations or updates at the different schools. And I was curious kind of how that process came together. For example, I saw Priest Street maybe had some trees that were needed to be taken down. Um, Francis Drake has some issues with the portables. Kind of how that wish list came together, is it based on enrollment, or is it based on critical need at each of the schools? Um, as I look at all the renovations that were done, I don't want to see some of the emergency issues. The voluminous nature that we just received in our packet, so.
Yeah, I think for, I think first, when you look at the volume of stuff that was done, I think we got to remember first of all that, uh, you know, we had to deal with the, the COVID situation. And again, with the, the assistance of both the, uh, city and the school departments, I, as well as with the money from the CARES Act, we were able to address many of those situations. Um, so I think that pretty much is everything in the binder, and I'd love to, if anybody has any questions about the binder, I'd be happy to answer them. Um, as for the other issues that we see, I think they're mostly safety. Okay, um, the, the portables at Francis Drake are in difficult shape. Um, a lot of that just by going and look at the building, we've had estimates to fix the roofs on the portables of over forty thousand dollars. So I kind of think that those situations, um, you know, we're going to throw money after money into buildings that are going to need extensive work after that. Uh, when you look at schools like, um, uh, Fallbrook, uh, again, it's, it's aged. And I think you're going to continually have to have a, a good amount of money in the budget to update that school. We're having consistent issues with the, uh, unit vents in that school. Um, consistent issues with heating in that school that we have to keep addressing. So, uh, budget-wise with that, we'd have to continue to look at investing in that school. Schools like Priest Street and Bennet Street, which are older buildings, they're actually very simple mechanically. Um, so they don't cost as much to, uh, run the HVAC or the heating systems in there. Um, but unfortunately, we have trees outside, and I think this was something under Tony that we were trying to address too, that are becoming very dangerous. Uh, limbs are falling off and they're actually hanging over the parking lot. So again, most of the things that I've looked at, that, um, that I've put kind of in our, you know, in the scope of things that we have to do are based on safety of the students and the people in the schools.
Butch, thank you very much. Um, also, Melissa, please note, you know, Butch, this is his first year, but this is actually his passion. And what we chose for the beginning of this year was for him to go to each building, assess where they're at, what we commandage, first, it was COVID, what we needed to do. And, uh, Butch has been working six, seven days a week and making sure that he's staying on top of these projects. And we've actually been able to move forward, it's, it's been really, Butch, and it's to your credit, um, that he knows what's happening in these buildings. So when, when instances happen, nothing is a surprise. So he's documenting, um, dating, checking in with every resource to make sure that our buildings are the safest they can be. And he really has been a true asset to us, so that was a great question, thank you, Melissa.
All right, and what?
Is that it, Melissa?
Maybe one last, I'm sorry. So then, as I was reading, I know every, if I'm understanding it correctly, the was requested, and twenty-two is based on what's requested. The chargeback, if I'm understanding it correctly, looks like it's gone down from what we requested in twenty-one. Um, I don't know if I'm misunderstanding that, but I just wanted an idea of that.
Thank you, Melissa, I can, um, shoot that between, uh, Melanie and Michael, would you both like to weigh in on that, Michael?
Sure, the, um, the city each year makes a required contribution to the city pension fund. And for the last many years, has also been making an additional contribution to work towards funding the unfunded liability because years and years and years ago, money wasn't put in that should have been put in. Every single community in the state is in, in that situation, we're all working to fix that. The city, City of Leominster's pension fund is now fully funded, we no longer have an unfunded pension liability. In fact, we're about twenty-five million dollars overfunded. So the, the last I've seen from, um, the city retirement board request to P-RAC, the Public Employees Retirement, and I remember forgetting what the A and the C stand for, the state body that oversees them, P-RAC. And what they've approved, there's no additional contribution next year. The city, the school department, department employees that are part of the city retirement system make up roughly thirty-one percent of the city, city employees on the retirement. So whatever the pension fund allocation we make is, thirty-one percent of that, give or take a percent each year, goes towards our indirect charges. So that has been typically six hundred thousand dollars for us of regular yearly contribution and two million dollars a year for catch-up. We don't have the catch-up anymore, that's the two million dollar draw.
Thank you, Michael. All right, is that it, Melissa?
That's it for me for now, thank you.
Okay, thank you, we'll move to Brandon.
Thanks, Eileen. Uh, first, I just want to thank everybody for who's been involved with this process from the beginning, uh, based on this binder of information that we got, uh, which is extremely comprehensive, it's been a lot of work. This binder is probably the best thing I've received this year, uh, because it, it, it was incredibly helpful. Uh, with that being said, I do have a few questions. First, uh, based on the assumptions that were in the book, it says no new fees for clubs, busing. Um, does that mean that the fees that we haven't been charging are going to come back online? Or are we, like, for busing, still going to do no fees, for clubs, still no fees?
So I would, moving forward, if it's a typical school year, uh, this school committee has policy around those fees, and so we will be enacting on those fees. We're not making any increases or charging for anything further. Um, should there be another catastrophe, we can talk about that. But currently, this school committee has set policy that there will be club fees, bus fees, and all of that. We're not looking to add or delineate from that policy.
Okay. And I just want to say, um, we did vote, um, to dispense of those fees for this year only.
Correct.
Um, due to the pandemic, just as a reminder to everyone.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that it was clear, because no new fees can be interpreted a few ways when we've stopped fees.
Yes, 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 thank you, actually, that's a great question.
Um, you've, Melanie kind of touched on this in the presentation tonight. Um, but I think it warrants some further explanation as well. Um, we were down a hundred and eighty-seven students at October first, clearly from our HR reports that we get every meeting. That number has gone back up. Uh, I'm curious if we've passed that one eighty-seven yet. And if so, how much more you think we're going to pass that? Basically, how much more do you think we're going to be behind, uh, going into this new, next school year?
So that's
That's a tough question.
Yeah, that's a really tough question, so right now, you'll see in your enrollment, uh, last year's enrollment was sixty-one, seventy-seven, as of today, we're at sixty, twenty-nine. So there are thirty-nine students since October one that have wanted to come back in. So we're watching it slowly and holding on to that. There are more verbal conversations that are happening, that parents are saying, can I still be a part of the Leominster Public Schools even though I chose not to enroll my kindergarten student? Or I chose to homeschool? So there are parents that want to finish out these last six weeks at home. What I can tell you from the parent information center is the line is out the door every day. My, my educational gut says I don't worry about Leominster Public Schools, um, getting back to at least sixty-one, seventy-seven. I feel strongly that our enrollment will come back. Um, families contact us all the time, they're just in a structure right now, you know, some people quit their jobs to do this. Some people lost their jobs and took part-time jobs, they moved family in. So they just want to finish out this year with some kind of, you know, precision and something that stays stable. Uh, but they're, they love the city and they want to come back. So I, I feel like our enrollment will skyrocket next year.
I tend to think you're right, and I just hope that the state realizes that it's going to affect cities like Leominster.
Correct.
Very differently than it's going to affect towns like Acton and who, you know, whose enrollment situation is different. Um, so hopefully, you know, legislators will make the commitment moving forward to, to do something to make up for kind of the hole.
And we feel the same way, also, Brandon, not to cut you off, but we've been reaching out to families too, uh, just to say, you know, you'll always have a seat here in Leominster, so if you want to come back, can you just let us know? This is what we do typically. Usually, at this time of year, we send out what's called the blue form, if you're moving, or if you know someone's coming in, we, we start searching for that information. So we've already been reaching out to families to say, hey, if you want to come back, could you let us know sooner rather than later? It really helps with our planning, trying to put staff in the, you know, the right seats on the bus. Uh, and we're, we're, actually, parents are very receptive to that, so it's been more.
Perfect. Um, kind of along the same lines, I know it's also going to be a tough question. Um, the, the binder in the presentation talked about bringing on forty-six full-time equivalents in the new school, the next school year. I'm just curious, based on that and enrollment, what the guess of class size will be with, you know, maybe the needs to still free, be three six, or three feet apart. Um, again, I understand that that's tough to answer not knowing.
Yeah, no, so we, we actually, we tried to keep class size with sort of around a twenty-five range. So we took the numbers of a typical school year, we know that the kindergarten was not reflective of what we've had in the past. We would hope class size would be twenty-five with those positions. If you see the positions, the forty-six that we've asked for, they're very, very specific. It, it will say what grade, what school, um, whether it's a full-time, part-time, whatever it is. Uh, so we're looking at the twenty-five range, and if all of the stars were to align and money were no option, of course, we'd love to have even smaller class sizes, but we know that twenty-five is more than manageable. And that's what is typical for us here in Leominster.
Awesome, thank you so much, again, thank you to everybody for all your hard work.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, next will be Peter.
Um, yeah, I don't have any additional questions at this time, obviously, I've been looking at iterations of this for a little while. Uh, so I just want to thank Melanie specifically and her, and her work, um, putting this together. Uh, you know, we've been meeting several times as the finance subcommittee, and, um, you know, she's been going back several times to make adjustments that we've requested, so I just want to thank her, and, uh, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Michael, I know you are also obviously on the finance committee, but do you have anything to add?
Right, so, so like Peter, I would, would like to thank everyone involved, especially Melanie. Um, definitely, we've, we've had multiple meetings in which my quite, many questions have been answered. So I have no additional questions at this time.
Thank you, Sue?
Hey, though.
Okay, Isabel?
So I don't have any questions, I have more comments, I guess. Um, and kind of want to piggyback on, um, some of Brandon's enrollment comments specifically. Um, so again, Melanie and the team, thank you so much for all of your work. And, um, again, we've been having weekly or so meetings on this, so I am pretty well briefed on the budget. Um, but just to piggyback on the enrollment, um, portion that Brandon brought up, um, many of you know I follow the state budget very closely. Um, and so, uh, I am also anticipating the data shows that there will be, um, high enrollment again, um, this upcoming year. Um, probably more so than last year, as we know, a hundred of the one eighty-seven we lost were kindergarten students. And so I'm anticipating an increase in kindergarten and first grade classes. Um, but the data does show that kids are returning, especially in cities like Leominster. And, uh, rather than, I guess, uh, communities like Wellesley and Wayland, Leominster for sure is gateway cities. Um, but to touch on that enrollment piece, um, specifically that Brandon pointed out about a funding gap because of the way that the House budget specifically used, um, twenty-twenty enrollment data. Um, I guess my, my biggest sentiment here is unfortunately, um, in the House's passage of the budget, um, they used that data, um, so it's going to be less in chapter seventy funds, given, um, that all goes through in a conference committee report. Um, but they are estimating a forty million reserve fund for the underfunding of enrollment and regional transportation. If you read the House Ways and Means budget very carefully, um, there are defining factors on how districts will receive those funds. Um, so I can't guarantee, just based on my, my reading of the material, that Leominster will be one of those communities. Um, but that gets to my main point of getting S R, S R three money. I would really hate to see, and I'm sure this may be the case depending on the House Ways and Means and the Senate Ways and Means final budgets that get signed by the governor. Um, we will need to use probably some of those funds to fill in that gap of funding, um, with that underfunding of enrollment count. Um, and so I guess my point is, I would really like to see as little spent on that as possible. And I know, I think the damage has kind of already been done with the House's passage of this. So we, I guess we wait on the Senate and the final signature. Um, but this is supposed to be funding that is used for, and I hate to use this phrase, but it's like the coined term these days of like learning loss and getting kids back on track after COVID-nineteen. Um, and so to use it for that or have to use it for that is really, really unfortunate. Um, and so I just, I also want to echo my disappointment in the state. And although I am very grateful for the increase in the Student Opportunity Act funding, um, and chapter seventy in general, um, that's just like really, really disappointing, especially for communities like ours to have to use um, that additional funding that we could use for other purposes on that. Um, so I guess that, that was just kind of my statement, but I think this presentation was super, um, wonderful. Melanie, you're phenomenal, and I really appreciate all the hard work on this, and I, I can't wait to continue our conversations on that, uh, in general. But thanks for, um, letting me have a little soapbox.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Isabel, Dean?
Yes, thank you, good job in the budget. Um, I know that's a, that's, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate it. And, um, to all the teachers, teachers appreciation, I know none of them, um, went to school or got their bachelor's and went on, get their other degrees, thinking that someday they'd be sitting there doing remote learning. And I, I'm the first, I'm the first to surrender the fact that I'm one of those kids that probably couldn't have, um, you know, probably would have been on mute and doing something else. But that isn't because, that's because, that isn't because of the teachers, because I've had the best teachers, uh, anyone could ever want to ask for. And so, uh, to all the teachers, uh, teachers appreciation, we do appreciate you. Um, a couple of questions. Um, so I think we've got to continue our communication, I'm sure they are, on the, on the, getting the students back, whatever it takes. Um, it's important, whether the state funds us or temporarily puts a moratorium on the, the, the count uh, for total enrollment, I think we've still got to stay in communication, I'm sure we are. Uh, and the other thing, I know that, um, some parents have expressed interest in keeping their kids because of mostly health reasons, keeping their kids remote learning, and I think that's important because we don't want them to leave our system. And, um, again, if, if they decide that, uh, the state doesn't pass that as an option, then they may go towards homeschooling or another kind of then they may go towards homeschooling or another kind of schooling, which doesn't come towards our enrollment. There goes, and the funding sort of follows them, so to speak, or, or we lose the funding on that. And then the breakdown of the insurance, I think the question was asked before about the insurance. So at some point, it doesn't have to be right away, but at some point when we understand our full insurance, so we can get an understanding of how much of the increase is a result of new people added to the system and then just existing. That shouldn't be hard. That's nothing we need for the budget, but I'd be just curious as to when we got our final numbers. And we should be releasing our final numbers soon from the city on, on what the insurance cost will be.
Absolutely.
And lastly, Butch, if you're still listening. So if Fall Brook, and there probably isn't a whole lot of people as I sort of look through the, the list here of people that are on. So the process, say for a Fall Brook, that you mentioned has a number of issues that need to be addressed. So what, what we do is send a letter of intent or at least notify the state building assistance program. And what they do is they'll send out a team of people to evaluate the school. They could do a couple of things. They could recommend a number of improvements of which are reimbursable. So they could come in and say, hey, all your mechanicals need to replace in the building. I think we've done the roof, we've done some improvements, but the mechanicals need to be replaced. Or they may say, you know what? The, the whole building needs a revamp. But the first thing that we need to do is communicate with the school building assistance. And so we've already done that. That's what we did at the high school. So Butch, if you want, we can pull up the paperwork and look at that. So you can sort of start from the very beginning, start get familiar with the process. Because about ventilation system, whatever it is you're talking about, if they amount, if they go over a certain amount, then that really should be, the next step should be a letter of intent to the state or at least have them come out and examine our building or buildings. Because if, if the cases that we can make that case that we either need, you know, a complete revamp, expansion renovation, then we, we need to get in line for that because it won't happen in one year. But I know Butch is new at it. We've got a number of new people in the process. But that's the most recent project that we did and got funded for.
Well, that'd be great. If you guys could give me that information, I'd be more than happy to research and get into that.
Absolutely.
No question. Absolutely.
Yeah. And then we get in line and based on the funding and who's doing what, but you know, what the need is based on other school systems across the state. You know, they help us fund those improvements or they might just say, you know what, Fall Brook's old enough, or whatever school. I just use Fall Brook because you brought it up. Significant improvement, so therefore, you know, we recommend that a full renovation of the school, top to bottom.
Sounds excellent. Absolutely. Give me that information. I'll, I'll pursue it.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
All right. Are you all set, Dean?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. And that certainly would be very helpful for Butch, so I appreciate that. So basically, you know, I want to thank everybody, Melanie, and certainly the finance subcommittee as well for all your hard work and the administrators who've spent hours and hours on this presentation. The book was very comprehensive and, and large, but it certainly was very detailed. And I think it was easily explained compared to maybe some past finance budget books that we have received. So thank you very much. I appreciate that. So at this point, we're going to end the presentations and we're going to move on to approval of the minutes for the April fifth.
Yep. Can I just add, since we have the opportunity to have all the administrators, can we just go through and ask them, you know, a couple of questions related to the budget or whatever?
Okay. Sure. I thought people would be asking as we gave them an opportunity, but do you have a specific question for an administrator?
Yeah, I, I'm very curious how each administrator, the number of students each administrator sees of their students passing for this year or whatever, however, you know, I, I want to know how the year went. And, you know, the students that are going to be taking advantage of the, you know, the funds over the summer, the summer schools, whatever. So I was hoping that, you know, all the administrators could just speak to that.
Let's start with Dr. Dubzinski.
Thanks, Superintendent Deacon and, and Maymember Kohler. I actually, we met last week, Superintendent and I, and as we do frequently, to go over a lot of data points. This data point was looking at not just student success rate, but also attendance as it's going forward. We identified probably, you know, I, I'm not so sure we're any worse off than we were a year ago. In fact, I met with eight teachers today who on the surface may have had higher than what we perceive the average of third quarter grades that were maybe a little bit suspect. They were great conversations, to be perfectly frank with you. I have ten more tomorrow and ten more on Wednesday with some teachers. And what we found was that typically, I'll be honest with you, second and third terms are usually the ones where we take a dip. And they did take a dip a little bit. That was, nothing was that uncommon. When we got right down to it in terms of grades for failures for the year, they were, there weren't very many cases where they were worried about their students failing for the year. Having said that, those that are in danger or that we had a red star next to, I, I can just tell you that our teachers are in touch with our families, our families are reaching out. Certainly has the remote caused a little bit of red flags in some families? Absolutely. I think we would be lying to ourselves if we didn't think it did. We're no different, you know, as I, as you know, I sit on the league principals committee and I can just tell you that we are really no different than any other school in the district, in the area. In fact, I think we're in better shape at the high school because I can just tell you that our teachers really have done a ton of outreach today. And what I asked for them to come to the meeting with was personal correspondence that they've had with families, emails, phone calls, in some cases, home visits. And I can just tell you that they are working, and the families. And what we've seen in the last two weeks since we've been back or the week since we've been back is those teachers have said, I see a real good uptick in the work since we've returned. In fact, on Sunday night, I sent out a second plea that said, do me a favor, if you stayed home and you're starting to doubt that a little bit, the door is still open, so come on back. And I received several phone calls Sunday night and several emails and calls today. So I think what may have been perceived as a problem, I think we're on the right track.
Is there any other questions for other building administrators, principals?
Well, could we just go through and ask them?
You want each school to report on?
Yeah, I'm curious. Sure. I, I'm interested in knowing how many, you know, students in each of their buildings, they foresee going through credit recovery this summer, taking advantage of it. I think that's important.
Do we want to have another presentation outside of this budget conversation?
Well, I guess I was just thinking, you know, while we have them all here, can't we just hear from them and, you know?
I guess it would be preliminary numbers since hopefully students and teachers will be working towards rectifying those situations. But if we just want to really quickly go through, I don't know if people would have numbers, but just in general.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect them to have numbers for that tonight, but they.
Yeah, I wouldn't expect.
Okay.
Yeah, just if we're going to go from high school on down, I can jump in from Skyview. I think what Dr. Dubzinski said is very accurate. I think we're using these last six weeks and really seven weeks now since we came back and brought kids back to the building in big numbers. We're really looking at this final piece as our chance to really let the kids show us what they can do, give the teachers an opportunity to intervene with the students that have been struggling, find ways of rectifying any of the confusion, any of the frustration, any of the barriers that we've seen through remote learning. And I think we're well on our way to doing that. So whereas we might have, if you caught me a month ago, we might have some pretty large numbers that we were in fear of failing for the year. We're really looking at this as a big stretch of time for interventions, improvement. And really the goal here is we don't want to use any kind of summer school, any kind of credit recovery as punishment. We're really looking for it as a, a way to help these kids if they need to recover and really accelerate from there. So our teachers are really focusing right now on who are the kids that are going to need that remediation, need that recovery over the summer instead of, well, these kids didn't get good grades all year long. We're going to have a chance right now to really kind of push the envelope, push the kids to really show us what they can do. And we're really looking for those kids who can succeed the next level. You know, regardless of how low some of the grades might have been, if they can succeed and we truly feel that, then they will go on to the next level. If we think they need some remediation and a chance to kind of recover and accelerate through summer school, we're going to put them in there and then give them a chance to do that too. So that's really our goal, very similar to what Dr. Dubzinski already explained.
Matt, would you like to add anything to what Doug said?
Absolutely. You know, just agreeing with what Doug had said. I think we're also, I, I don't, we don't have specific numbers on hand right now. But what my staff is, is really focusing on is that SEL piece and community outreach. Do we have a number of kids who may have some failing grades throughout the year? Absolutely. This was a very difficult process going from remote to hybrid to back to in-person to whatever it may be. So what we're really trying to work with now is making sure students have specific skill development in place. We know that there's going to be adjustments that need to be made next year. We're looking at our kind of ahead to our schedule when in terms of our, what we used to call workshop period and retooling that to really be a strategic intervention piece each day when we return for our students coming back. So we can, you know, work with those students and what they need when they get back. As Doug said, our summer school enrollment right now, quickly off the top of my head, we're just really trying to focus on kids who, who may have gone missing for a little bit, dropped off in terms of work completion or not being in, you know, in the city for some time. The kids who may not have done as much work as they normally should have, we're going to be confident they're going to be okay next year. We'll get them back. We're, we're looking towards our summer school as for kids who really didn't get the opportunity to, whether it may be their home situation or whatever, experience, you know, get, get the education that they, they should have during the year. And I think, sorry, and I, I noticed John Vancilet jumped on, so we, we jumped to the middle school before John got a chance to speak.
That's okay. John's like, that's okay. We don't need it. John, do you want to add to that?
Thanks, Matt. The, we, we're competency-based, so our students, it's not like a traditional grade level assessment. They, they progress based upon meeting certain competencies. And at this point in time, the strong majority of our students are on target to meet all competencies. All students get summer plans. So we don't have a traditional summer school, but they have an individualized learning plan which continues year-round for all four years that the students are at our school. So each student will have different expectations for the summer depending upon their individualized learning plan.
And.
Thank you. What about any elementary school teachers?
So I mean, I would have one speak. We're a standards-based district, so it's really difficult. That we're not, we're not looking at retention for children. We're, we're looking at trying to recover after this. And so right now, we've got six and a half weeks to step in and put our best foot forward and make sure that we can get as many children across the finish line. Families right now trust us and they are giving their all. We also are assessing students non-stop each and every day. But Sue, would you like to hear from an elementary perspective or are middle and high school okay?
Sure. One elementary or whatever.
How about Andreas? Are you available? There he is.
Hey, hello.
Hey, how are you?
Good to see you. Very interesting conversations, and so thank you for asking that question. So I'll say this, with regards to retention, that's simply not in our plans at this point. And there might be one or two exceptions that not necessarily have to do with the fact that they might not have met the standard. But other factors involved, like, you know, family involvement, parent requests for different reasons that we discuss at a different time, I guess, but not because of this. I think that what the district has put together in terms of summer schools, and at this point, my belief is that the district is putting forward options for not just specialist students, but all students who families are able to or willing to, to integrate to the different programs being offered. So thus, so I guess what I'm saying is that the intervention or the bouncing forward is not stopping at the end of the school year. It's going to continue through the, through the, through the summer. As principals, the elementary level, we meet and we talk a lot, we plan a lot together. One of the things that we are doing currently is looking into the fall because, you know, what was was and what can we do about it, right? So definitely was a different year. And so we are putting teams of teachers and administration together to assess the data that we have available and that we can compile between now and the end of the school year, as well as the resources that we will have. In knowing that this was a completely different year, how can we best utilize that? What, how can we be creative? So I think the, if anything, you know, I, I always say it, I don't like to waste a, a, a crisis, right? And so, and this, the crisis has pushed us over to work closer together, not only within the administrative team, but also with our teachers. So we have, we are creating teams of teachers who are sitting and waiting to just get together and make very specific plans when it comes to interventions. How, how do we best utilize our specials that we can wait to get back, right? And so there are very meaningful conversations taking place at the school level, not just to look at what happened, but more importantly, what can we do moving forward?
Thank you, Andres. That was great. Thank you.
So just one comment. So maybe like as we get closer toward the end of the year and fairness to all the administrators, you know, we can get a list of, you know, what it's looking like for the enrollment in the summer recovery programs. I, I think that's important. Because obviously, we want everybody to succeed.
Correct.
And in fairness to you, you're just assessing, you know, the students coming back. But I, I think it's important and it certainly does have budget implications in some manner. So I think that would be a good follow-up. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much. Yes, we're looking for high engagement this summer. So if parents are reaching out to us, we're going to reach out to you. So just be ready for the phone call. We just want students in, we want to keep them going, we want to keep this as seamless as possible and roll into the fall like we typically would. I've never looked forward to an opening day as much as I'm looking for, forward to August thirty-first next year.
And I was going to say the same thing as, as far as putting it on the agenda as we get a little closer. So we had to stand, you know, the enrollment numbers and all the various summer programs and cover recredit, credit recovery, sorry, I can't speak. And then my own thought too, as far as budget goes, is obviously, I would love to see some of the S R funds used to support some of that summer programming for families to either defray some of the costs or to, you know, have some of that completely covered.
We are not charging this summer, Eileen.
Okay, perfect, which I wanted, that wasn't really clear in anything you said, so I wanted to make sure that that came out.
And one of our biggest pieces around transportation, so we need to use S R money for that in order for as many students as possible to participate.
Great, thank you. I appreciate you saying that because I know that wasn't, I don't specifically announce, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else for, questions for any of the administrators prior to us moving on to approval of the minutes? We appreciate all of your efforts and thank you for joining us tonight. You're welcome to stay on. But certainly understand if you need to get ready for tomorrow.
I'd like to make a note to approve the minutes.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Okay.
And is there any corrections, emissions or errors? Michael? All right. So we're going to do a voice vote because we have a motion and a second. Ron?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Michael?
Yay.
Isabel? Sue?
Yay.
Dean?
Yes.
And I'm a yay. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we'll move to subcommittee reports. Michael, I know you have some warrants.
Yes, so finance, finance committee met today at six. We have a few items for the full committee's attention. So first up is approval of warrants from the general fund. We have warrant forty totaling one million, one hundred, three thousand, six hundred, eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight. We have warrant forty totaling one million, one hundred three thousand, six hundred eighty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Warrant forty-one totaling one million, nine hundred nine thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars and nine cents. Warrant forty-two totaling one hundred fifty-four thousand, three hundred fifty-eight dollars and seventy cents. And warrant forty-three totaling two million, nine hundred forty-one thousand, one dollar and fourteen cents. Also from grants and revolving, we have warrant forty totaling sixty-eight thousand, nine hundred forty-one dollars and sixty-six cents. Warrant forty-one totaling one hundred fifty-four thousand, four hundred twenty-four dollars and six cents. Warrant forty-two totaling thirty-four thousand, two hundred five dollars and sixty-five cents. And warrant forty-three totaling four hundred thirty-three thousand, two hundred five dollars and fifty-two cents. Finance has reviewed and approved these warrants, so I make a motion that we, as a full school committee, approve the warrants as read.
Right, a second? Thank you. Any question, Dean had seconded, any questions? All right, the voice vote, Ron?
Oh, I got, yes, yay.
Melissa?
Hey.
Brandon?
Yes.
Peter?
Yay.
Michael?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Dean?
Yes.
And I'll be a yay, motion carries. Michael, were there other things?
Yes, secondly, it's that time of year where we're getting close to the end of the fiscal year, so it is time to start doing transfers to take money out of places where it hasn't been spent and put it towards places where additional funds are needed. The first big step of that is we have a request from the business department, from the school department to transfer three million dollars from salaries and wages to expenses. Because that crosses that boundary, that kind of transfer requires a full school committee vote. If you're interested in the finance package, we had details of which lines it was coming out of in salaries and wages and which lines it was going into in expenses. If somebody wants me to, I can read that, but it's about a page worth. But, so.
I was gonna say, do we have a second? Because you were making a motion.
Yes, I make a motion, we approve that.
And Sue seconded. Is there any questions?
I think, I, I have no issue with it at all, except for I think it's one of those issues that we should be introducing it to the, to the committee and then having a discussion on it the following meeting to vote on it. And I wouldn't expect Mike to read every single line, but I think this is one of those things, that's a lot of money to transfer. And I wouldn't suggest we have the conversation tonight, we still have executive session. But I, I do think this is one of those areas that, as we've done in the past, where it's introduced on, on one school committee meeting and then the following meeting, we open it up for discussion. So everybody's had an opportunity to review it.
I, I'm not personally opposed to that. I do think that's a new thing. We have been bringing up and voting on things the same night up until we, we've, and again, I'm not really arguing against the practice. I know the city council does it this way and, and I see the merits of doing it this way. I do think this is new. I would like to ask, have Melanie speak to whether there are going to be any consequences if it is delayed.
You're pros and Michael.
Say that again, Michael. I think he's asking Melanie if there's anything that needs us urgent attention or can it wait until our next school committee meeting?
No, we can certainly wait if there needs further discussion on it, so I'm okay with that.
So in that case, I will withdraw my motion and we can bring that to the full school committee in two.
For discussion.
Can you put that on the agenda, please then, so that it's a specific item, action item for us?
And all I mean is a generalization, we're transferring three million as a communication to the public, saying we're taking three million out of salary, but this is what we're doing with it, so that, you know, there's that, we're, we're being transparent to them that, you know, look for these, look for the three million dollars, this is what you should see it, right?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that most of that is in the documentation that we had in the finance committee. Michael, I don't know if you agree, but.
Yes, I, I think the document we need is there. I just, I think it would be redundant, but I think we should put it in the full school committee packet anyway.
It's in there.
Right, um, is it?
I believe the finance committee packet was included in the school committee packet.
Yeah, it was.
Thank you.
Right, right, as far as what was distributed to everybody. So we do have it.
Yep.
We do, we do, but what I'm saying is, when we have a conversation about this, we're, we're communicating to the public about this. It's not like, we're on the same page, Mike.
I'm not arguing, yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so at this point, we're going to vote on it next time and it'll be one of our action items.
Much appreciated, thank you.
Is there anything else, Michael?
Last thing I'll say is we had put two, we were potentially going to approve the minutes for the, for two finance meetings are on our agenda, but finance has asked for some corrections and some additional details on those. So we will get those and review them and bring them to full, school committee for full approval next time as well.
Great, thank you. And I know, Ron, there was no.
Yeah, there was no policy meeting tonight.
Great, so then we move on to action items and I don't see anything noted here under action items at this time.
Well, Eileen, actually I forgot, there's one more thing I should say that's, it's up to you, but I believe we do need to schedule the budget hearing.
I was going to do that under new and old business.
That's fine.
But we're moving on to new and old business. So we do need to schedule a budget hearing, meeting with the city council, joint city council as well. So I don't know if Chris can organize those, that meeting?
I make a motion that we have a, schedule a public hearing, just so it's an official act by the school committee.
Second.
Second.
Okay, any, Ron?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yes.
Peter?
Yay.
Michael?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'm a yay. So that's the public hearing and then we also need the joint city council meeting, which is something that we typically have every year around this time.
So I may have missed, missed it, but did we specify the date for the public hearing? Are we gonna do that at our next school committee meeting, seventeenth or a different?
I think we should schedule it soon as possible.
We can, we can get it for the May seventeenth. Well, the, the May seventeenth is going to be the hour budget hearing.
Right.
Yes, then the city council usually schedules a budget hearing where we go over there and talk to them. You want another one in addition?
My motion was just so the school committee called for a public hearing.
Yes.
And then you can, you, you can schedule that whenever, seventeenth, I think is what the superintendent's.
Correct. Yes, yeah, I have to put a, a notice in the newspaper seven days before, so I can do that. And so typically, there's two different things. Typically, we have sort of around this time of year, a joint meeting with the city council where we kind of, you know, talk about things prior to, when we go down to the city council to do the budget presentation. Typically, we have a joint meeting with the city council just to, you know, sometimes it's longer than others, but just to talk about this year and what's been going on and if anybody has any questions or wants to discuss any of our budget assumptions, those kinds of things. And then we have the actual presentation when they have the budget hearings. Does that make sense to folks? That's typically what we do?
Yeah.
Are we requesting a meeting?
We would be requesting a meeting with city council, just to have a preliminary meeting before the, the actual budget presentation, a formal budget presentation, just so they understand, you know, kind of where we're coming from, what's going on, if there's any questions. It's been a crazy year.
Exactly. To the chair, Eileen, would it be by Zoom or by telephone?
So we would be doing it by Zoom is what we would be requesting, since we're requesting it.
So could we possibly look at the twenty-fourth and Christine will reach out and see if that works for the city council?
Sure.
So seven days after the seventeenth, correct?
Correct.
Right.
Seven o'clock, six o'clock, five o'clock?
Well, that's, that's their night of a regular meeting, isn't it?
Yes.
So that would mean, so we would have to meet before their regular meeting, I would think, right?
Correct.
Why, why don't we just ask them what's convenient for them, since they have so much, they have so much on their agendas recently that I think we just ask them, what's good for you? Are you interested and, and if you are, what works for you? We can make our schedules work, I think.
Right, and they could come back and say we're not interested, but typically we do have that meeting, you know, every year prior to the budget, official budget presentation. And I just want to extend that courtesy and make sure that we're having open communication.
Okay.
Okay, I can, I'll find out tomorrow. I'll send them something and find out tomorrow. Okay, perfect, thank you, Chris.
Yeah.
So the other thing I just wanted to sort of throw out there, and I don't think we're there yet, but at some point, as things are opening up, we as a committee need to think about, you know, whether we would be meeting in person at some point in time. And I don't know how folks feel about that. I don't know, you know, we still have the you know, guidelines about, we still need to have an, you know, an open meeting so that people can attend. I'm not sure whether we can have people in attending in person or via Zoom. I know I had asked, you know, if that could be brought up to our attorney to give some direction on that. But I just wanted to, as things are opening up, that's something we need to consider as a committee, you know, of, going forward. And I don't expect it happening, you know, in the next meeting or two, but.
I think it all goes along with how, what Baker's gonna decide how it's gonna open up. Because if we do have person to person.
Talking about lots of things opening up by.
I know, I know, but if we open, but you know, as you were saying, Eileen, if we have, we stop having person to person, like at, at Apple, at Apple seeds and whatnot, they're gonna have to decide how many people can be there and how we're gonna have the, the classic shields and this and that, so. I think we're gonna be doing Zoom for a while until things get settled.
Ron, it looks like the sky's gonna open up behind you.
Well, that's, that's.
Like Gone with the Wind, a segment from Gone with the Wind.
No, it's not, it's, 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 it's a, it's a sunrise in Quebec. I got a background, because I almost put the ship back up there, but I said, oh, I use the sunrise, you know?
That was a ship with a P.
There was a sheep there, a ship, yeah, it was Cape Cod Canal.
Okay.
Our, our problem was not meeting, it was the open meeting.
It was the open meeting part of it, yes.
Yes, and that, that was always our issue.
I think guidance is gonna be changing on that soon. I don't know the exact date, but I think indoor meetings are gonna be able to be around two hundred, I think, was got.
May nineteenth.
Yeah, our ability to have these meetings remotely is based on the governor's executive order allowing it. So at any point, he could rescind that and then we would have no choice but to meet in person, I think. Or at least that would be his interpretation of the law at that point.
So at this.
A common audience, I think, as much as anything else.
Yeah.
Adjourn?
Yes, and yeah, just a second, is there, we're not adjourning because we're going into executive session. But I just throw that on the horizon. I know that we're not making any decisions, but as things are opening up, I want people to be talking about it and feeling where their comfort level is. So at this point, is there anything else under new or old business? All right, can I have a motion to enter executive session, please?
I'd like to make a motion to go on to executive session for the purposes of negotiations.
And can we just cite that it's under chapter thirty-nine, please?
Yes.
Okay, this will be.
Returning?
We will not be returning.
Second.
Correct, and Isabel will not be in attendance. So we're doing it by voice vote, Ron?
Yay.
Melissa?
Yay.
Brandon?
Yay.
Peter?
Yay.
Michael?
Yay.
Isabel?
Yay.
Sue?
Yay.
Dean?
Yay.
And I'm a yay. All right, so for everyone's edification, we are going to be exiting Zoom. We are not returning and our executive session is being held in Google meets. So thank you and we'll be adjourning the meeting from executive session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.
All right, see you at the other one.